Do one will stand. Do the pledge of allegiance with me. Darren Brock, remain standing while Darren Brock gives the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ballot please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you tonight to thank you for this assemblage. Thank you for the people that come out here and serve. Thank you for the interested individuals that want to come and learn more about what's going on in their city, Lord. Lord, we just ask that you come upon our presence tonight, Lord, and just let your will be done here. Just give us wisdom, give everyone clarity, and just help us to make the best decisions in the interest of your city, Lord, and of the people. Let's ask all in Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Here.
Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which contains the Lowell City Council minutes, the regular meeting, November seventeen, two thousand and nine, and the financial Any questions?
I would just like to say I really like how the report is on the financial, the November financial statement with that extra column that shows the budget. I really appreciate that.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Next item is a public forum. No one has signed up on the sheet. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Next item is an ordinance adopting fees for fire department emergency response to reoccurring false alarms for the city of Lowell.
Evening. I assume all of you have not finished with this over. Basically, what is...
Businesses in the city, a lot of them have alarm systems and/or if they have sprinkler system, they have to have. Other businesses, it's based on their requirements. And we have had, and not just a recent past, but a history past, of businesses that have multiple false alarms. And so, we looked into it. I talked to some of the other cities in the area, and they have very similar ordinances, where what we do is we, the first false alarm, if it's not attributed to like weather or something like that, if it's a system problem, the first one, we'd handle it like normal. After the second one, within a twelve-month period, we would notify them in writing, if you pass this ordinance, that after three, in that twelve-month period, there would be a charge for that. What it does is it's to help encourage the business owners who have these problems to get their alarm companies out there, or their sprinkler companies, or whatever the problem is, it's causing, and get it looked at and get it fixed. We have, I'm not going to be specific, but we have a few businesses in the area that we have responded to false alarms on a regular basis. And when I say regular, we're talking five, six, seven times a year. Couple of them, four or five times within just six months. So, we feel, we and I in particular feel like this is an important step to help alleviate that problem. It creates a safety concern for us, obviously, anytime you're responding lights and sirens to any emergency. It's a little bit more hazardous, obviously, as you dispatch and roll out, for not only us, but particularly also the traffic involved and other personnel. So, it does create an undue safety hazard there. All false, all commercial alarms require a full apparatus and personnel response, rather than just one engine and two or three firemen. So, you're rolling anywhere from two to four trucks. You're rolling anywhere from five to fifteen people. You're also bringing in your volunteers. You're having the traffic issue of them having to come into the station to roll those apparatus. So, there's a lot of factors involved that are truly safety factors that can be mitigated if they would fix the alarms. And so, we feel like this is a positive step to help encourage getting that done. We do provide advice. We do go on-site and look at them, with them, and see what we can do to help. We're not alarm technicians, and we really aren't able to fix it for them. Legally, we can't do that. But we do try to help them as much as we can, and we feel like, you know, we're still going to continue to do that, but there needs to be some repercussion if you're a business owner that just says, "Well, I don't know what it was, but it's okay, you know. It wasn't any emergency, no big deal." So, we feel like this is a good step in that direction. Anybody got any questions about it?
This only applies to businesses? This does not apply to residents?
It's written with business in mind.
Okay.
Now, I can't, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, I can't remember in my tenure here a issue with residential alarms where we've had multiple false alarms. I'm looking at them because they've obviously been here longer than I have. Most, every problem that I can remember, and that I'm aware of, is all commercial-based.
So, if you had a resident that alarm went off three times in a year, are we going to hold them?
I would feel that we'd almost have to. Now, let me back that up and say that would be monitored alarms, probably. I would feel that with a resident, this is my opinion, I would think that with a residence, most of the residential alarms we have are not monitored alarms. They're the smoke alarm that has the faulty battery. Usually, by the time we get the third call with them, we're out there, Nolan and Justin in particular, are real good about going out to those residences, and we will physically, if they'll purchase them, we'll physically replace the alarms for them and put new ones in, so.
I need a little educating about how alarms work.
Uh-huh.
Like, a commercial typically is monitored by a...
An outside source.
And then they call you?
They call dispatch. What it is, the alarm, depending on what caused the alarm, and it can be numerous different things there. It can be a flow alarm on a sprinkler system. It can be a smoke detector. It can be a, what they call a tamper switch on a riser on a sprinkler system. It can be a duct detector in your heating duct, in commercial, particularly in commercial. And those things trigger an alarm. That alarm, depending on the level of alarm, there's some alarms that are called supervisory. Those are alarms that just sound in the business itself, okay? And they're typically ones that, they're not saying, "Hey, you got a fire." They're saying, "Hey, you've got a problem with this system. You need to have it looked at." We don't hear about those. They handle those in themselves. What we hear about is the ones that, like the ones I just mentioned, the alarm goes off, it's monitored by this company, whoever the business has doing their alarm system. They call our dispatch, and we're automatically dispatched on that alarm.
And this is only for fire situations? It's not the EMS stuff?
No, ma'am, this is for fire, yes.
Fire only?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if a citizen that had a monitor thing around her neck...
That's not what we...
...had a call and it simply because she took it off or something?
That's not what we're looking at. That's not really our, that's a pretty red...
Nothing to do with this?
No, ma'am.
And then you have a year or so. Is that a calendar year? January is January?
It's written as a calendar year. I modeled this after, and I'll be honest about it, I modeled this after the cities north and south of us. I actually pulled up their ordinances, read them. We discussed a rolling or a fixed year, and a rolling twelve months would be a nightmare to keep up with. So, for that reason, we went with a calendar year.
And it's strictly for mechanical...
It's, I won't say this, and I'm going to be wrong. I believe in here it spells out...
In section one, it does specify mechanical or electrical.
Yes, a fire alarm system, oh, that's definitions. In here somewhere, I remember seeing it.
Number three, attempt.
Okay. Yeah, "False alarm is the activation of a fire alarm system through mechanical failure, malfunction, (cough) excuse me, improper installation, improper maintenance, or negligence of the owners or the lesee of the fire alarm system or his employees or agents." This is not if we have a thunderstorm, because they will set them off. No, that's not for something like that. It's not something that's weather-related or not controllable by the business. This is strictly for the things that, you know, if they're having their annual inspections done, if they're having false alarms, and they're having a service person come in and look at it and try to fix it, those are the issues, are strictly the things that are controllable issues. And obviously, weather, for example, is not a controllable issue, and we would not count that toward their two or three or four or however many alarms we have.
And I'm not sure the way I read it, if somebody was to pull the wall switch...
That's not, that's a...
I didn't think so, but I wanted to make sure of that.
No, sir.
Some mischief.
Yeah, you can't hold...
He has three strikes against him in a year, and then somebody slips in and pulls a red thing.
I'd have a hard time in good conscience saying, "Hey, you could have controlled that," you know. I have kids. Enough said.
And you have that in your definition, too. This does not include alarms caused by unauthorized tampering with a fire alarm system by anyone other than the fire alarm user or his agent.
Right. That would be unauthorized tampering.
I think we tried to spell it out in the definitions as best we could, knowing that I would have to explain some of it, and I'm perfectly happy to do that.
Mike, I want to just touch back on the homeowner. I guess when, item two, it refers to a person, is that, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the homeowners in Lowell or residents that have an alarm, a monitored system through your security, whatever it may be, ADT or whoever it may, I assume that they would also, if a fire alarm went off and they had that service, they would call you guys, correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is correct.
Somehow, I want to just, and maybe that's clear enough, a person, but, because it really, this seems to me it's hitting home on the commercial business-type buildings.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that if that is the intent that we make it, we spell it out in here, and maybe a person is clear enough, I don't know. I was asking others' opinions, but I guess from my stand, I don't have a problem with this at all. I think if you're making runs, we need to get paid for it, but I think three is enough.
I think that on the residential alarms, like you're talking about, and like I said, that issue is very, very few and far between. I think we need to leave enough leeway in there that if that person has a monitored system, and they know they're having false alarms, and they're not having their people come out and check it, we got the same issue there. So, you know, those I think we would have to review on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, if you can show, quite honestly, if you can show me that you're trying, we're going to make it work.
I think you're being more than fair, particularly where you're giving them ten days to show proof that they've had repairs.
I'm pretty comfortable with the way it is spelled. And again, it gives us enough leeway that, you know, we can address the, whether it's residential or commercial, we can address the, I hate to use the term, but for lack of a better term, the abusers of the notification system, who just don't want to spend the money to have someone come out and figure it out, because it does cost to have it figured out, and I realize that. But it costs us every time we go out, and it puts us and our citizens at risk every time we go out. And I, we go out enough times for legitimate reasons that I want to try to curtail the, as much as possible, the ones that we can help control. Any other questions? Thank you.
If there's no more questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules placed on third and final reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
An ordinance adopting fees for fire department emergency responses to recurring false alarms for the city of Lowell, Arkansas. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
This will be ordinance number eight-six-six.
Next item is a resolution adopting an amended two thousand and nine budget for the city of Lowell, Arkansas.
Did anyone have any questions about this? We always amend the two thousand and nine budget for housekeeping reasons at the end
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
This will be resolution number zero-nine-one-three.
The next item on your agenda is a planning area. I would like to skip over that one, the reason being Michael Solomon and Tom Kicklack had children, Christmas parties they had to go to, and they said they thought they would be here at seven-thirty. And we'll move on to item D, which is the amended to the minutes for June sixteen, two thousand and nine council meeting. Jeanette.
Okay, this is basically a housekeeping item. Neither Mary nor I caught it when we originally did the minutes, but the auditor requires a statement in the minutes when the council reviews the previous audit. There has to be a statement that the findings were discussed and explained, and the minutes talked around that, but the word findings was not in the minutes. So, that particular section of the minutes is changed to include the statement, the two findings were discussed and explained. That's all that this is for, is to satisfy the auditors for the audit of two thousand and seven.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the amendment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
I'd like to request, well, let's see, first of all, Jeanette has some census material she wants to talk to you about.
All the council got one of these, and there's a stack of them on the table in the back. Becoming partners with the Census Bureau, we were entitled to order some products for advertising promotion for the census within the city. We have beaucoup of these, so please feel free to take all that you'd like. What it is, is a magnet at the center pulls out, so you have a cute little frame for the kids or the grandkids, and inside you have a separate magnet that has important phone numbers for city, emergency numbers, call before you dig numbers, graffiti, all kinds of things. So, there's a stack of them back there on the back table. Take however many you want. If you want a larger supply for your business or someplace that you frequent in Lowell, please see me afterwards. I'll give you just about all you could possibly ever want and more.
We got our open house Thursday. I'm sure you all have seen the sign. It was in the newsletter, so be sure you stop by. Let's take about a five-minute break. Tom ought to be here any time. He said he would make it about seven-thirty. We felt like we wanted to move the planning area boundaries to last in case there's any legal questions that you might have of Tom, so if you all don't mind, we'll take about a five, ten-minute break, waiting for Tom. Thank you.
Christmas presents like that, I only have one. Or somebody did one. I was...
In the in and out business, we were leaving to go to the kids' wedding. He dropped a live mouse. Oh, see, you brought your code book. Now, I'm the only bad one, Tom.
This is the one we let go for the franchisees because they weren't going to serve.
What does it do, what does it do to like those seven... Our planning boundary, but we actually...
Oh, is that the...
Call it, meeting back to order, please.
Let the meeting begin.
Last item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt a revised planning area boundary map for the city of Lowell, Arkansas.
Good evening. Tonight, we're bringing back up the change to our planning boundary. I'm bringing this to you from the Planning Commission with a due-pass recommendation from them. I know that we had much discussion last time, and there were several questions from the city council on whether this is a prudent thing to do. I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have, and I have some points that I would also like to make. Three years ago, this administration was looking at annexing land out east. There has been a push in this city to expand our city limits. We added twelve hundred acres in two thousand and three, and we were looking, and we were looking at what the ramifications would be if we annexed the land to our east. The first thing to consider is what services can we provide those people out there? The service that we heard over and over when we talked to them was sewer. We can't provide sewer in that area because they are on a rural water system, and that's not, and they would have to be on a city water system in order for that to happen. So, that isn't an option. We already have two thousand acres in Lowell that we do not have sewer for, and that we're working on getting sewer for. There are also, there's also the issue of all the non-conforming businesses that are located in that area. There's no rhyme or reason to how people have placed businesses in the county, and there is no way for a city to regulate how they are placed or built in the county. We are still dealing with this problem in places that are located within our city limits now from our two thousand and three annexation. After talking to the fire chief, we listened to his concerns that our ISO rating could be affected if we annexed that portion of land. After weighing all of those arguments, we decided that it was not prudent for us to try to annex the land. Now, to talk about the planning boundary. What is a planning boundary? A planning boundary is the area of land outside the city limits within five miles that a city has said that they want to be able to have some say on. And the only thing that the state code allows us to have a say on is a subdivision of land. However, the county judge absolutely has the final say because he is the one that can file the plat. Commercial developments do not have to meet Lowell's large-scale requirements if they're in the planning boundary. The county no longer requires people inside our planning boundary to go through the county process, only through the city process when it is a residential subdivide, lots split situation. This is not a good plan, since any rideaways or easements that are requested have to be given to the county. They cannot be given to the city. We cannot accept those for the city, even though on many occasions, people have tried to give them to us. We can suggest and ask all day long for certain things to be changed on a plan, but at the end of the day, the county can accept and file any plan that it sees fit. We have very little power or control to be able to force changes that need to be made outside the city limits in our planning boundary. I was told of a city in our region that required landscaping for a subdivision in the county. The developer said they would not change their landscape plan. The city, in this instance, did not back down. In the end, the county judge signed off on the plat, and the developer was not required to make the changes, the landscaping, that the city requested. The real issue in the county is not the subdivision requirements or the uses. The real issue is inspections and fire code enforcement. Whether changes are made to our planning boundary or it stays the same, those issues will not be addressed because Lowell does not have the authority on those matters. Our fire district goes all the way to the lake. Changing the planning boundary will not change our fire district. It will not change any control or say that our fire department has, in that area right now, or in the future. We are asking you to change the planning boundary so that we can have a better handle on the land that would likely be in the city limits.
No, Mike? Just kind of curious, how much, how much of a burden is this on the Planning Commission dealing with issues out in this boundary area? Is there a lot coming from that area that kind of weighs down the Planning Commission?
I don't think the Planning Commission sees the burden, but the staff certainly does.
Really? How many hours a week? I mean, is it several hours a week?
I don't know, Keith. I haven't measured it.
Okay. Does, does this affect the SO rating if, you know, I guess that is my concern, if there's an issue with this area being figured in with the SO rating of our city, I would agree we need to not include that in our planning, planning boundary.
To try to help clarify that a little bit, our ISO is split into two ratings. It's the city's rating has a class three. Everything outside of the city has a class five. The reason for that is because of the response time and the lack of a water system. If we ever annex, and I, that's up to you all, but if we were to ever annex to the east, it could very well adversely affect the inside, the city ISO rating, because then you have to consider it as part of the city, and therefore, it has to meet the same requirements that any place else in the city does. So, long-term, yes, it could have some effect. Mike asked me about changing the boundary itself with annexation not even being a factor, and my answer to him on that was, as the laws stand, and Mr. Kicklack, you correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the laws as they are right now, that doesn't have any effect on us inside the city. But there's always the possibility that ISO may in the future go out and say, "Well, yeah, but you've got some control of these outer areas that are within your response district, and we want to ensure that if you're looking at doing that, that we want to go ahead and incorporate that into your current city requirements." They haven't done that, and I've not heard any talk that they will. But that possibility is always out there. As towns and cities continue to grow, you never know what they're going to do. The direct answer to your question is yes, annexation would very definitely have a possible effect on our overall class rating.
Well, I wasn't really even talking about annexation. I was just saying, just keeping that planning boundary as it is, as far as just having that control in that area of how, I guess, large-scale developments are handled and...
We really don't have a lot of control, even as a fire department. It's our district. We respond to it. We cover it. We provide the fire protection, yes, but the county has a fire marshal and whatever else the heck they have up there. We really don't have any authority to enforce outside the city limits, the fire codes. We can go out and say, and a perfect example that I'll give you is controlled burns. If someone is, wants to do a controlled burn out in the county, and it's in my fire district, I can tell them yes or no. And I can tell them legally what they can and can't burn. But if I then go out to that burn, and they burnt, or are burning illegal materials, I or my representatives do not have the authority, because we're outside the city limits, to cite them for that, or to do anything about it. What we have to do is contact the county personnel and have them come out and do it. Same with the large scale. We've had some developers that have worked real well with us on a voluntary basis. My fire marshal reviews the plats that they send, or used to send us, they don't even send them anymore to us that I know of, for commercial-type stuff. But when they would send them to us, all we were doing, they would say, what would you like to see us put in there? Sometimes it happened, sometimes it didn't. So we really didn't have that, we don't have the control that people think we have, from, from my perspective, just because it's our fire district. We don't, we don't really, we're really at the mercy of, of others. We can make all the recommendations we want, but we can't enforce.
Okay, so basically, if I'm understanding this, the only thing that really affects our ISO rating, or, or even your authority to do anything, is just our city limits?
That is correct.
Landing boundary doesn't make a difference either way.
That is absolutely correct.
For purposes of inspections, what's involved with the inspections? Because this is, I mean, quite a large area, who does that specifically impact?
If it's building, it's going to specifically impact Don Harkins and his crew. If it's fire, it's going to specifically impact us.
To the extent that you feel you may need additional staffing?
It's a possibility. It would depend, in my case, it would depend on what was commercial and what was residential. I can't speak for Don, but I, I, I know that if commercial ever went that way, absolutely, we would probably be needing some help.
And Mike, is that, Michael, is that something you're anticipating as far as development?
No, because right now, as the law states, we can't, you know, we, we have no control over large-scale developments. Now, I did, I did bring a handout in the last week. The county has sent out a chart that basically shows it has every city, and what they will, what they want to see and what they don't want to see. What I think's interesting about this is, it's fairly erroneous. For the first part, they've never contacted me or anybody in this city to ask what our feelings are on it, and they have notes on what we've said. So I would start with that. The other thing I would say is, some of the cities they have down is doing reviews of large scales and having a say on large-scale developments. I don't see anywhere in the arcs of code where that's allowed. So, you know, I think there's a lot of questions on, on the different things and what the county is, is anticipating, so. It's two pages.
Mike, I guess the question I have is, what does the city gain by keeping it the way it is?
What's that?
What does the city gain from keeping it the way it is?
Nothing.
You see it as nothing?
Right.
And what do we gain by letting go of that, that planning area?
We have, we have less, we'll do about six less lot splits. That's what we did this year, was six lot splits in the county. But we'll have about, I, I think that could pick up to maybe one a month, that we would have less person coming in to...
Time is what you're saying, taking time away from other city businesses?
Right.
How do we differ, if, okay, if county's taking care of all this, how do we differ on lot splits than the county? I mean, what would be, what would the county require, and what would we require that would be different?
Um, I don't think, on their subdivision requirements, there's some, which is what we use to, for lot splits. I, I would say that the road width size, also the, the asphalt that they use is different. But as far as a pure lot split, that you don't have any additions to the, to the road, there might be some right-of-way's and easements that we ask for that they may not. But again, we can't accept those if they're in the county, they have to accept those because they would have control of the easement.
Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, just because we're...
You're wrong.
Just because that's in our plan, uh, planning boundary, it does not mean someone can't annex into that area, correct?
It does not mean that, that's correct. In your territorial jurisdiction, there have been some wars about annexation. But most likely what always happens, Keith, is that once a city begins that annexation process, if this city doesn't want that to happen, they begin it as well. And if they begin within a certain time of each other, the election is basically where they choose, where those people choose to go. Would it be, say, to the north, or this city, the city to the south, or this city? Primarily, though, and I think we discussed this before, your, the practice has become territorial jurisdiction is a way of preparing land for annexation. It's a way of planning and controlling so that when you do extend your limits, as the chief was talking about, and Mike's talking about, your streets are the right width, subdivisions have streetlights that, that are compliant, you know, the curbs and the gutters are compliant, the drainage course is one of the most important things now. That whole Scrabble board of requirements that fit together just right so that you can move your line farther to the east, or the west, or wherever, and not have a bunch of non-compliant property. And so that's the important thing. If you don't ever plan on going out there, then you really need not worry about that jurisdiction. You, just like the chief said, you leave it up to the county. I think it's fair to say.
You know, we just passed this thing about commercial false alarms. So as it stands right now, out in the county, if we respond to a false alarm at a commercial property, we can't cite them, we can't charge them? That can only apply within city limits, so...
It's a city law, so it only applies within the city limits. Now, I don't know, do we have to go out there, chief? I mean... By your agreements, you've got to respond?
Yeah, we're part of a 28 department, you, organization that split up the county into actual districts per department, and that is our assigned area. Yes, we do have to go.
See, this isn't going to affect that at all, that's going to stay the same. This is just for planning, this is just for when developments come in, you know. I, I, if the county's not enforcing them, or, or saying, hey, you know, you need to go talk to the city of Lowell because this is in their plan, planning boundary, if they're not forcing that, then you're right, this really serves no, no purpose. And, you know, it really doesn't help us or benefit us to, to have this area in our planning district, or our planning boundary. But you said you're doing lot splits, I guess that's also my concern, because if someone's going out and, and breaking off, you know, an acre here, an acre there, and within, you know, 10 years, you know, you may have, you know, maybe 10, you, you could have 50 acres, and now, all of a sudden, it's a 50-home subdivision, and there are no streets, there's no improvements, there's no drainage, and if we do ever annex out there, I don't think we're going to do it in the next 20 years, I don't think we're going to do it in the next 50 years. But that is the only area left that we can grow, the only way we can grow. And if we ever decide to go and grow out into that area, you know, you may have, you, you, you're going to have a lot of issues out there. That's my only concern, is the subdivision not having, not following a subdivision ordinance, that's my only concern.
Keith, pick one little point, Mike.
Was that true?
Mayor, man, just real quick. Keith, just one little thing. If, the, the, the county not enforcing it isn't an issue, I think, to get confused about. I think you stick to this state law, and it says, you know, I'll read it. Yeah, I won't read it. I'll pretend to read it, I'll make it up as I go along.
Big words, huh?
It says that the county clerk may not file a plat that's presented to her or him unless it has this planning commission's signature on it. It says may not. So it's not, they don't have a choice of enforcing it or not. That can't get filed, now, they've been filed without this commission passing on them, but they have no effect. If the city ever wanted to undo that, they could. So, for instance, if, you know, Joe and Lois Madonia are going to build a business out there, and the county says, don't you go into Lowell and ask them, just ask us, and they subdivide their land, and like you're saying, the city decides to, that they're going to annex just a little sliver of that, and those, the Madonias are in there, well, you'd say, no, stop. We can stop the county from filing that plat. But I don't think that's the issue. No, right now you can. But the issue, I think, is you're, you're, you're getting things through that you don't want to see because you're never going out there, at least not in the foreseeable future. I think that's more the issue to concentrate on.
And, well, I just say, has anybody been out there and kind of looked at the land and seen, what are you, what's your feeling? Do you think it's something that we'd really been...
It's, it's nothing that's going to happen in the next 50 years, but then again, you know, there's a lake out there, and I believe our planning boundary goes out in the middle of the lake.
It does.
And so, you know, who knows what, you know, Corps of Engineer, Corps of Engineers may say, hey, you know what, we're going to allow casinos out there along the lakeshore. You don't know what's going to happen on the lake, I don't think that's going to happen. And I know that, you know, hey, we're probably not going to be around if it does happen, but I'm just saying, you know, okay. But what I'm saying is, you don't know what development could happen there closer to the lake. I, I know there's already subdivisions out there, there's, there's probably not a lot of places, there's, there's the Beaver Water District, uh, Water Intake out there. I know that, I don't foresee that, but you never know. And I guess my only, my main concern was the subdivision. I can tell you out on the west side, there's, there's been subdivisions that were divided, and, you know, streets were not, you know, installed properly. We've had issues on, on the west side. And even right now, I think there, you know, there are pieces of land with several homes on it, and there's no improvements.
Keith, were those, those subdivisions, were those in our planning boundary when we took them in?
No. I don't believe so. I believe they're actually part of the county, are you talking out west?
Yeah.
I believe that was out in the county.
But I mean, they were in the county, but do you know if they were in our planning boundary too?
I can't remember if they were, I know we, we, we actually met, we took the planning boundary and actually took it out to Cave Springs at one point. I want, I, I don't think it went that far out. I think when we decided to annex the land, I think that's when we expanded out the boundary. I can't remember exactly when that happened.
Well, and that's, I guess that, that's kind of my point, is I think that a lot of these, I mean, I'm, I'm going to give you an example of a series of lot splits that we've had the last couple of months. We had a bank that took over a piece of property out, out in the planning boundary, out on Irving McGar Road. And the bank, when they took it over, said, well, we can't, we can't sell it like this, so we're going to go ahead, we want it split into three lots that we're going to try to sell. So they came through, and they were doing that, and we went through that process. Same, same surveyor, but the guy whose land they took came in. Well, his brother said, I'm going to give you an acre of land on my property so that you can, so that you can complete a trailer and, and, and live out there, since you're losing your land. So they came through, did a lot split. Well, then the bank came back, and the bank said, you know what? We'll take some other land this guy has, in exchange, we'll give him his house back and the property that it's on, but we want to change it again. So now, they lot split it again. And as we went through all these processes, each one, we got $150 for, okay? I will tell you that we spent a lot more in labor and a lot more in review fees. Now, I do not send those, those lot splits to the, to the engineer, because there's not any engineering that's involved. I do that, I started doing that to save money, because in 2008, I saw where it really was costing us. Every time we were sending it to the engineer, it was costing us $450 to $500. And of course, every time they come in lot split, you know, these are people that don't understand the process, don't know, and don't understand why they have to come to us. So we go through that explanation. I'm not complaining about us having to, to spend that time, but I guess my point is, I would much rather be spending that time on things in Lowell, or things that will be in Lowell someday, rather than worry about the if, you know, in 50 years, when we pull that in, because the fact of the matter is, changes that were made out west, they're affecting us regardless of it was in the planning boundary or not. You can't remember whether it was in the planning boundary or not, I can't remember, but I do can tell you all the issues that we have out there.
Do you have a number as far as how much, how much money? I mean, I guess that's my, that's my question is, you're right, if, if we're spending a lot of time, a lot of manpower, governing, governing, I can't talk, overseeing what's going on out there, then we shouldn't spend, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be doing that, I agree. But I don't, so this is a cost-saving measure, that's fine, but, you know...
Well, I think it's more than that, but yeah, I mean, I...
I mean, I understand, I mean, if it's, if it's taken away from your job, you have an estimate of how much time it's taken it to, to oversee this?
Any, any estimate I give you, other than to tell you that there's been eight that have gone through, is going to be a ballpark figure that I'm going to pull out of the air.
I mean, if this happens once every 24 months or something, I mean...
It happens about every month to month and a half. I mean, I mean, Linda, when you were on the Planning Commission, you remember how many lot splits came through, and there were quite a few.
I, I do remember, we had some issues out, and, and I guess this is kind of one thing. I, I know there was a subdivision that was built way out, it's, it was real close to the lake. And there was covenants in that subdivision that said the land couldn't be subdivided into, you couldn't take your lot, subdivide it into smaller pieces, and I can't remember the acreage size, a guy wanted to do, to do that.
I remember that.
And all the, all the neighbors, his neighbors came to the city, and it was because that was our planning boundary that we were able to say yea or nay on that. And we protected the, those people, and, you know, yeah, the guy left, and he was a little, he was upset because he couldn't subdivide his piece of land. But we protected the individuals out there in, in that area.
Was that the one, we protected somebody from their covenants?
No, we protected, we, basically, because it had to come to the city of Lowell to get approval for, for subdividing his parcel. I, I, what he wanted to do is, he, if I remember correctly, this has been a long time, he wanted to basically subdivide off of like a two-acre tract of land, and then sell the remaining, like, five acres. And the, the covenant, I believe, in that subdivision was that, that the lots could not be smaller than five acres. And everyone in that area, they were upset because they didn't want, they, they could foresee this being a common occurrence, people subdividing their, their land. And there, basically, the, the roads through this little subdivision, they were dirt roads. And so the more people, and, and the reason why the covenant was written the way it was, is because they didn't want people subdivi, subdividing their 10-acre plots of land, and basically allowing that many people to go on this, live on this dirt road, because it would have been, it would have been a nightmare to keep maintenance on that road. And that was, and that, because think about it, if you, if, if all of a sudden, you, you develop a subdivision that was maybe designed for 20 people, and all of a sudden, now there's 200 people living on it.
Keith, I hate to say this, but if it's a covenant, we wouldn't have had any business, we don't have a law that would prohibit us, you know, would prohibit us splitting it.
However, we did have the, because it wasn't our planning boundary, we, we could say yea or nay on the lot split.
But there, there, you got no legal basis to do that, right? I mean, all you have, if all you had, from what you're telling me, and I'm just taking that, is all you had was the covenants. You know, we don't have anything in the city of Lowell that says you can't split a five, you know, a seven-acre lot down to two and five.
I don't know how it was then, but the Planning Commission had to approve lot splits. I don't know if it's still that way now.
We have to approve lots, because we have to have a legal basis to do it, I mean, we can't just, because of a covenant, make that termination.
I believe it was a covenant, I can't remember. You're, this, this happened, like I said, it was about seven or eight years ago.
If I may, basically, what I'm, I'm hearing tonight, and I want to make sure I've got clarity and understand what, what the discussion is, is in our planning area, we have very little authority for anything, and there's some question of whether or not the county overrules us on anything we do there anyway.
Right.
So the argument is not, let's put the planning boundary here, the argument is, let's not have a planning boundary.
No. That's not the argument I'm making.
Well, that's the argument that's coming across, though. If we don't have authority anyway, then let's not talk about where it should be, because we shouldn't have one, because we don't have the authority. 'cause we shouldn't have one, 'cause we don't have the authority. Now, if we say, "Well, we should have one because someday we might wanna annex this." Well, if we're gonna plan, I wish we'd have planned forty and fifty years ago, and maybe we wouldn't have given away valuable land the Walmart built on, and maybe we'd have been ready for some of this out west that we had to take in then that wasn't ever prepared properly before we annexed that. If we're gonna plan, I wanna plan to expand, and I wanna look at the only direction we aren't laying off in. If we're not gonna plan, if we're gonna say, "Well, we're gonna get overruled, let's just get out of the party and take our ball and go home," I don't wanna have a planning boundary. I'm not gonna say, "I wanna plan a little bit, but not very much."
Well, I certainly wouldn't oppose doing away with the planning boundary, if that's what you're saying. I, that's not the argument I'm trying to make, um, but, uh...
I, I think there's another item here that we need to consider in this, people, and, and that is, there's been a considerable change in the county government in the last two years. We, in this city, the last, we're not the only one, all cities, have experienced a twenty-five percent increase in jail fees. They changed the millage, which costs us money. They're taking more money from us. They've done away with the planning commission in the county. They have none. So we don't know what's coming next. They could come in here and tell Don, "You have got to go inspect every building that's built out there that planning commission. We don't know what's coming." That's my concern. We have seen this erosion. I can tell you, it was in the newspaper, and Dave Bisby himself told me that they spend seventy percent of their money on personnel. They stopped doing chip and seal roads. They sold all of their equipment. I don't know what they're gonna do up there.
Well, I don't wanna run scared on what they might do. I don't wanna run scared on what they might do.
We're not running scared. We're being proactive to the benefit of our city of Lowell.
You know, you have to get...
That's my point.
I think the state has to, they, they have say in what the county can and can't do.
Sure.
And, and so I, I don't, unless the state passes a law that says the county can do that, I, I can't see, you know, the city of Lowell being responsible for things like that in the planning boundary. I think the only reason why we even made that part of, uh, part of our planning boundary was so that we can make sure, we could have a say in, in some of the things that went on out there so that we were not stuck with a mess. And, and, and we really didn't think there was that much going on anyway. And so, you know, if we wanna change it, if, if, if whatever's going, going on out there anyway, the large-scale developments, the subdivisions, whatever, if it's not coming to us to review anyway, then yes, we probably should give it back to the county, but, you know...
Well, Jerry, I think I have a question.
Yeah, uh... Basically, I'm sitting here, I'm looking at this, came from, what brought this up, uh, it came from the Lowell Planning Commission and recommended the city council and the mayor that we, uh, proceed with this to, for, uh, it's to the city's advantage that we do this. Is this not correct? Is it advantageous to the city that we extend this boundary area to include the new land? It is or it is not? If it is, we need to proceed. If it's not advantageous to the city, we don't wanna do it. I mean, what...
Well, and our feeling is, is that it's advantageous.
Okay, it's advantageous to the city that we, that we expand our planning area, and, uh, and I agree personally, that I'd rather have some say than no say. I mean, we're in that, uh, at least we're gonna be in, uh, the, the, the loop uh, as far as the city goes, and if it's gonna be advantageous to us to do it, let's do it.
Well, what, to clarify there, Jerry, right now, we're already out to the lake. They're wanting to decrease the area where we have less say in this.
Is that what we're saying?
That's what we're saying.
We're not saying less say. We're saying we want to change our boundaries.
Right, to where we have no say beyond that, and bring back the area we have say.
Well...
Not less say, no say. We, right now, we have say out to the lake, limited...
We don't have say. We have, you know, we have some, we have some territorial jurisdiction.
So the advantageous thing for the city is, is, uh, is less manpower wage and, and work, and workload and that sort of thing. Is that correct?
Yes, and I, and I think it, it allows us to focus on what we're actually gonna annex someday and not mess with parts of the county that won't ever be a part of Lowell.
Can we not increase the fees in that planning area that's outside the city?
I certainly wouldn't support that. I mean, I wouldn't bring that as a staff item because I don't think that, you know, I, I don't think that a hundred and fifty dollars, I, we're in line with the other municipalities right now, and I think that's important.
Okay, I asked some questions about annexation. Number one, can you annex areas, just small areas? Or does it have to attach to the city limits to be able to annex? In other words, if something out there by the lake came in, would we have to annex all the way, all the land in between?
Contiguity is a requirement.
That's why if you look at Highway twelve, you see this little strip of, you know, Bentonville that goes along Highway twelve to the airport.
Very narrow.
Yep, and the same thing in Fayetteville. When you look on Highway sixteen, you see, you know, Fayetteville's annexed all the way down, down to Highway sixteen to Elkins.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I saw a, I saw an annexation down at Regional Planning where, uh, there was a city that was trying, they had two thousand people. And there's a, if you only have two thousand people, and I can't remember what the break is, but you can only take in ten percent a year. So they had this thin strip that went down, and then they had taken in a rock quarry they wanted to annex in, and then it was right at their ten percent that they could take in. They were doing that to try to get the tax dollars from the rock quarry. But it was a very thin line, and it was very, it was very interesting, anyway.
Mike, I've got one question just as far as annexing.
Sure.
If you do annex whatever portion into the city, what is the city really required to provide to the newly annexed citizens or, or the newly annexed land? I mean, are you required to get their roads up to a certain standard? I mean, obviously, they're not required to do sit sewer. So I guess my question is, what are we legally required to provide?
Only three things is fire, police, and streets.
Okay.
That a city's required to provide.
And so specifically, maintenance to those streets? So if we're talking about possibly annexing in some of these areas where maybe the streets aren't up to what we would normally require, it could be a long-term cost to the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I think it's important to realize that a lot of times when you get to the subdivisions, I mean, Eden's Bluff subdivision are a perfect example, where when we, you know, we went through that whole, when it was accepted and all those things, sure, the, you know, we, they ended up asking and, and varying the roads to meet the county standards instead of the city's standards, but the roads to get out there were so treacherous that it didn't make a lot of sense by the time you got out there. And they're right on the lake, and that's the last one. And, and that was one of the last ones, too. The county has, has gotten, or has, you know, they fired their planning director about six or eight months ago, maybe a little bit more. And she was, she was pretty good about following all of their standards and, and working with us. But when they fired her, that's when they started saying, "Well, you know, we really don't think, we shouldn't have been doing a lot of this in the first place." And so, you know, I, I think it's okay to ask them to provide services that they should be asking, you know, should be providing. When, you know, they have subdivision requirements that aren't too far off ours. And there's some differences, but they aren't too far off ours. Um, you know, the, the one thing I notice is the county judge has the same frustrations that we do with the, the property lines that go to the middle of the road, like what you dealt with, Kendall, when you bought your house, you know? He, he has seen that, and I shared that story with him, um, you know, but he, he's running into that problem all over the county. So they understand that their, and their issues, I mean, there's, there's parts in this county that haven't been touched since, you know...
You said that, that, uh, these subdivisions that offer easements, but we can accept them?
Correct.
Well, they give the easement, though, to the county, right?
Yes.
Okay, when, if we were to annex, then the easements would transfer to the city?
Yes.
So it's really kind of a moot point because we would end up with the easements.
If we annexed it in, but I think that, yeah.
And we say what they need to be, then the county will abide by that?
I said it one more time because I'm not sure I caught it, Marty.
In other words, okay, somebody comes in, they want a subdivision. We tell them, "Okay, it's gotta be this way. We need easements here, 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 here." We say what we need, what we want. Does the county say, "Okay, that's what they need? That's what they want? That's how it is?"
No. The county has the option to review and come in and say, "Well, we, we don't think it should be that way. We think it should be like this, this, and this." And they look at their codes. Now, they say we have final, final sign-off on it, but that they wanna be able to review it. Now, that's a very, very loose term. What does review mean? Well, in some ways, I would tell you that everything we look at in the city, we review. You know, we have review on everything. Or what they are saying is, we just want, we just wanna see it. It could be, that's what I'm saying. They, they're not real clear on what their interpretation was. There was about a month and a half where they didn't wanna see anything, and they didn't want us to send them anything, and then they realized what a bad idea that was. And so then they changed it. So, you know, no, I don't think it's as easy as, "We say that it's gonna be this way, and they agree."
Now, what were you saying, Mayor, about what you think the county might be able to do?
Pardon?
Are, is there legislation happening, proposed? Anything that's going to force cities to assume responsibilities out in their planning?
Nothing that we're aware of at this time. We, we do know that Dave Bisby is looking into making changes in the county.
Can the county just go make changes and dictate to the cities?
Oh.
Or does it have to go through the state of Arkansas? I mean, it's, so he can't dictate to us that we have to go do building inspections. He can't dictate to us that we have to do thus and such.
No.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the whole reason this is even an issue, though. I mean, we've talked about a lot of things. Basically, it's just to save money, and the city doesn't wanna mess with anything out there. They just, basically...
No, I, I mean, if you're asking me, if you're asking me why I'm putting it forward, the reason I'm putting it forward is I believe that if you, you should only take control over things that you plan on annexing into, to your city and providing services for. And that's, that's honestly how I believe. Now, I know that that matters, you know? Um, I will say, will it save us money on, on staff hours? Absolutely. Will it save us headaches and allow us to focus on a smaller area? Absolutely. Will it save us money every year when we do flyovers and do aerial photos? Yeah, it'll cost us about half of what it does now. I mean, yes, those are all things that it will do.
How long's this, how long's this area been in the Lowell planning boundary?
I can tell you it's been in it since at least two thousand and four. I don't know what the jurisdiction map looked like before that.
Where was the old, where was the old boundary? Where did it, before that, before two thousand and four, whenever?
I don't know.
Where did it end, do you know?
I don't know.
Can I... Oh, I'm sorry. Just so I understand, if, if, you know, we're saving staff hours and stuff, I, I'd kinda like to know which staff will be affected. I mean, who, who will lose hours on this? I mean, what are we looking at as far as anything along that line?
I don't know. I mean, Darren, I mean, I guess it saves Chris some time, saves me some time. It would save, um, you know, it would, it would save the building, the, the building services time, you know? It would, you know, it could save anybody that reviews plans, Jimmy, it would save him some time. And there's a lot of people...
Salary, salary people that wouldn't affect as far as saving the city any money.
Okay.
So it, it's gonna save...
Okay.
If we're cutting hours, I mean...
Well, if you're saying that, sure. I mean, that's, that's your opinion.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you're telling us it'll save hours. That's, we're saving the city hours and money, so I'm thinking, "All right, well, that means people are being, working less hours and get paid less money." So that's what I'm seeing what the savings translate here.
Mike, we've been doing, we've been doing building inspections out there?
No.
Or have we...
But they reviewing the plans.
Like the building, like the building plans?
All those people review the plans.
Can a city be forced to annex?
No.
I think something that bothers me with this whole thing, and, and I, I, you know, it's, 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 it's very, I, I can't come up with a clear answer, but what bothers me and niggles in the back of my mind is that had, years ago, I think somebody addressed this issue, maybe Keith did a while ago, had years ago, the people that sat here and did this job had the foresight to have a planning boundary that we might, could have some control over, might have alleviated a lot of problems. And, and I'm talking a long time ago. The, we can't just sit here and look at, "In the near future, no, we're not gonna annex." We don't know what the next generation is gonna wanna do with that property. But if it's ours, to try to control a little bit and to give the people that live out there, that might one day be our citizens of Lowell, then maybe we should exercise that. I don't see any real tangible cost as to what it's costing us to, to do this. We have eight lot splits. That doesn't sound huge. Um, you know, you have people in the city, on the planning commission, that have expertise at looking at these things. I, I think that's something they should do, not just for the city of Lowell, but for our planning area, where we might be someday. So until I can see some tangible cost that says, "Okay, this is costing us X amount of dollars." We're not talking about annexation. That's another issue. And I don't think it's for the next twenty years. It could be. Who knows what happens? It could be in the next ten years. It could be in the next five, the way things can get crazy. You don't know. And because the cost isn't a huge burden, you know, if we were sitting here talking about annexing, that'd be an entirely different thing, um, tomorrow, you know? But what we're gonna do twenty years from now? I don't know.
You know, I don't really have one thing that, that I've got to look at on this that's, is a real simple thing. When a road goes through somewhere, it, it changes the entire landscape. Uh, when you look at, uh, four twelve east going out towards Knob Hill, Sonora, Heinzville, Huntsville, that area. Uh, when that went from a two-lane to a four-lane and big beautiful bridge that went through there, there's now subdivisions over there, big, awesome subdivisions, right there on the lake that weren't there before. We don't know from, from right now that there's not any plans of anything like what's been proposed of Old Wire being four, being the five-lane all the way through into Rogers. And a corner of this, what were proposed, um, is just barely nicking a corner of that where they're talking about going through. We don't know what's gonna happen in that area, uh, just like nobody really realized what was gonna happen when, uh, Five Forty opened up and when, uh, the Walmart Supercenter opened up right there on what used to be thought of as Lowell's area, so...
What's the corner that the alignments go up to?
Uh, it's, it'd be going, it's hard to see up here, but the Old Wire Road, where it goes, where it's gonna go, they're talking about going through into, what is it, Second Street or something?
No, no, it's going to First Street.
First Street, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, it comes up, it's over here, it's right there.
No, it comes down.
Yeah, I can't, I can't tell on my map. My, I'm too tiny to tell. Either way, it's, it's all in the planning boundary. So it goes up, comes out, and then comes up this way, actually. Comes up to First Street.
I also think, I also think the addition of four twelve...
I'm sorry?
The, the addition of the four... The, the addition of the four twelve freeway. I don't know how far north it's gonna be to our planning boundary.
Another thing is the, uh, the four twelve bypass. You know, there, there's several things that have been talked about. And I know that nothing's getting started today. That, that's just my, my concern is, is, uh, a simple road can totally change the entire aspect of everything we're looking at.
You know, we all have kids and grandkids and their imagination and their creativity is not even tapped. They'll be taking care of things someday. I don't wanna landlock them. I really don't.
I'd like to move, we table this issue.
Second, then?
Lowell call?
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Any other comments from the council members? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
No objections. Meeting is adjourned.